As possible and we'd like to have the majority of the work done before the end of first semester. And so we're working on that and this will definitely help us in that process. A couple of things to note, we do have five bids for the board to consider and the majority of the majority of the work that are on these bids are hurricane related, hurricane Florence related. These were formal bids, which requires a board approval for formal bids. And when we look at the formal bids, I will also go through the bid tabs on one or two of them just to make sure there's some clarification on that. There's a little confusion when you see the bid tabs compared to some of the pricing that you see that we're requesting. And so I'd like to go ahead and provide some clarification there so it's better understood. And the other thing to make note of too is these formal bids right here had to have, we used the services of Architect, Architectural Engineering Services, Smith Senate, if you remember back in earlier this year that the board approved Smith Senate helping us out with this process because these were complex projects and require some structural evaluations and also some construction administration and some bidding processes too. So, first thing I'd like to do is before I get started is recognize a couple of people. We've got Dusty Oliver and Daniel Gray here from Maintenance. They've been working extremely hard putting these bids together with Ed Gordon, Smith Senate, and Les Parker. And then Sherri Bernhardt, who's in Purchasing Director, she keeps us honest. In this process, these are formal bids and we make sure we review everything with purchasing before we move forward to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed as far as general statutes and board policy is concerned. And then, one person you don't see but will be coming in pretty quickly will be Ed Gordon from Smith Senate. He'll be here as well. And if there's any technical questions that you have for these projects, just let us know and we'll take care and we'll try to address them here in this meeting right here. If we can, then we'll go ahead and get the answers to you as quickly as possible. So the first, the first bid award that we'd like to look at is a roofing project for Swansboro High School. And what we're looking at here is if you look in your packet, there's a couple of sheets in there but one of the sheet, the very last sheet on your packet, shows you a diagram, a floor plan basically, that shows the layout where the roofing is going to be completed. That's going to include the 500 Hall, the 600 Hall, the auditorium, I mean, and some of the hallways. We're talking about 660 squares of a roof that needs to be taken care of. For the majority of the, majority of the roofing contract, it's going to be metal roof that we're requesting. And then for the auditorium, it's going to be a TPO membrane roof. The amount that we're looking at is a total of $963,882. And looking at the, looking at the bid tabs, we're going to recommend that B and M Roofing Contractors be the person that has awarded the bid. When you go to the bid tabs themselves, if you don't mind going through the bid tabs on this one, this would be a good time to explain how this works for us. Couple of things to note. These are hurricane-related projects. So because they're hurricane-related projects, the insurance company will pay for like-kind quality, okay, for, to complete the work, make sure it's taken care of. Well, these roofs that were on Swansboro High School, with the exception of the auditorium, which is a membrane roof, but the others, the 500 and 600 Hall, were shingle roofs. So the insurance company will say, okay, we'll go ahead and pay for a shingle roof system again. Now in that process, I think we've talked about this in the past and hopefully I won't talk too much about Load Master anymore. I've kind of beaten that one, beaten that dead horse quite a bit. But Load Master Roof is a composite engineered roofing system that required a special type of sheet rock called DuraRock that was used for the decking subs for aid. Once we put the shingle on, okay, it worked fine and it works great, but once you had to replace the shingles, then you had to pull the old shingles off and you start tearing up that sheet rock underneath. The reason why that's important is with the base bid for the shingle roof, we also had to use alternate one, had to be combined with that. Okay, because you have to replace that first layer of sheet rock that you had with the shingle roofs. And Dusty, Daniel, if I'm saying this incorrectly, let me know. Okay, keep me honest here. So, when we're looking at a shingle roof that the hur, that for like-kind quality for NCDPI Insurance Fund, we were looking at base bid and alternate number one. For a metal roof, what we are looking at is, well, we have a base bid. What would it cost in addition to the base bid to put a metal roof on? And that's alternate number two. Alternate number one isn't needed for a metal roof. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then the alternate number three was if FEMA was going to be able to provide some assistance with these metal roofs, if we were going to add metal roofs, then there was going to be some additional charges for the, for the construction, I mean, for the administration of the projects. And so the contractors added additional cost if it was going to be, going to be FEMA-related funding going to be provided for that. Since the time we went out to bid, we were communicating with FEMA and the mitigating, mitigation request that we had with FEMA to do metal roofs was denied. They said they'd do it like-kind quality as well. And so alternate number three does not go into play at all. So the only alternates that we're looking at is alternate number one, if we're going to use a shingle roof. Alternate number two, if we're going to go to metal. Does that make sense? So when we went, so when we looked at this, a couple of things to note was the page's construction at a cost of $948,000 for, for the base bid and alternate number one was the lowest, lowest bidder for a shingle roof. But when we looked at a metal roof, B and M Roofing was the lowest bidder. And after we looked at the cost for the, at $1,86,337. Well, that was 120, that was, that was a difference right there that we knew there was, the metal roof, we were going to have to absorb the cost ourselves. Okay, through state funds, state or local funds, but we would have to absorb the cost for the metal roof because the insurance company, remember, is going to pay for like-kind quality with a shingle roof. So in that process, there was a difference that we had to address and when you're looking at the, so when we looked at that and we realized that B and M was the roofing contractor, we were going to do metal roofs, we went back also and looked at the bid specifications themselves and realized that there was some value engineering that we could address in that bid specifications for those, for that bid that B and M did. One of the things is that we have contingencies in place for any roofing project that we do. Well, in this project right here, we went back and, and looked at the roofs in more detail, in additional detail, and realized that we had 5,000 square feet of a contingency for additional decking, replacement of decking. Well, we only need about 1,500 square feet of contingency for any kind of decking that needs to be replaced. By doing that, we were able to cut out $122,000 off that metal bid. I know this sounds confusing, but, but long story short, what that means is you can get a metal roof for about $14,982 more than it costs us for a, for a shingle roof. So that being said, one of the things that we'd like to do is after we reviewed the bids, Smith Senate reviewed the bids and staff reviewed the bids and looked at the value engineering. Staff would like to request board to consider a motion to award the construction project for a new metal roof for Swansboro High School in the amount of $963,882 to B and M Roofing.
At this time, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation for this roofing project?
Second.
Any discussion, comments?
Just a couple of quick things here. I understand the value engineering portion of this. Where will the additional funds that state or local funds required, where are those coming from? Are those in this year's budget? Is that part of the $3 million that we had set aside for projects this year?
Yes, sir, we have, we had some, all sites roofing contingency of $300,000 that we could use for that as well as we are in negotiations. Well, we are communicating with the state and they may absorb the costs ourselves with funds outside the insurance funds.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is an interior project.
Ma'am, Chairwoman, the interior project is for Swansboro High School. And this includes classrooms and construction bays in the 500 Hall, which is three career tech education bays, three career tech classrooms. We have an auditorium, work that needs to be done, and also some work that needs to be done in the hallways. This includes replacing some insulation, ceilings and walls, and carpet, carpet flooring. The cost for that is 200, I mean, the lowest responsible bidder was Team Construction LLC for an amount of $243,526. In the package, you'll see that we put, gave a little bit of a, showed you the floor plan where this work is going to be done. And we would like to have this work completed by November of 2019. So at this time, staff would consider a motion to award the construction project for interior repairs for Swansboro High School in the amount of $243,526 to Team Construction LLC.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, questions?
One of the things I would like to note on this one as well before, is that NCDPI Insurance will be funding this, this project here.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so the next, the next project is the roofing project for Dixon Elementary School. This is a large project, it's going to take about 1,200 square yards to complete, well, actually 1,189 square yards to complete. And a couple of things to note in this one. Originally, we had advertised for the bid opening on, to be opened on June 6th. Unfortunately, we only had two bidders at that time that came in to, for the bid opening, so we couldn't open the bid. So we went out and re-advertised and we reopened the bid on June 18th, 2019. Okay, there were still two qualified bidders for the, for the proposals, for the submitted proposals, and that was Davis Company and Quality Roofing. And at that point in time, the lowest, the lowest, we'd still like, we'd use the same process that we used with Southwest High School where like-kind quality was shingle, shingle roofs that DPI Insurance would support. And then we also had metal roof quotes as well. So when we looked at it, we still wanted to go with metal roofs because the value of doing it one time instead of doing several times over the life of the, life of the building was more, was, was better for the school system and better for the community and state taxpayers. So one of the things that we're doing is we're recommending that we do a metal roof at $1,727,347. And that would be with Quality Roofing. And then, when you see the numbers, when you look at the bid tabs, you'll notice that there is some differences in what we're looking at between what Quality Roofing's numbers are and what our numbers are. And that is because we were able to do some value engineering again when we went out and looked at these roofs. And we were able to cut off $120,000 off, off the bid price. So the total price will be $1,727,347. Additional, but that means that there's going to be an additional $102,000 that's going to have to be paid for through state and local funds. And, and we do have the funds available in our capital outlays for this as well, as well as we're applying for the state to take over the cost of that as well. So it'll either be through capital outlay or where the state will be absorbing the cost for us. So at this point in time, I would ask the board to consider a motion towards a construction project for a new metal roof at Dixon Elementary School in the, in the amount of $1,727,347 to Quality Roofing Incorporated.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion or questions?
Quick question with regards to the overall project here. If you look at the last page there, the outline for the roofing there where we're going to be doing this, everything except one of the hallways or one of the sections of buildings is going to be replaced with metal roofing. What's the condition of the remaining portion that's not going to be done in this project?
Dusty, you want to answer that? I mean, as far as the condition of the, this, one thing, Mr. Williams, to note is that wing right there was done in the 2006 bomb project, so this is a relatively new, new facility right here. And the roofing, roofing that was in place already was in good condition. And we didn't see any major damage at that point in time on this one, besides the normal wear and tear and leaks.
It's just, it hasn't reached its life expectancy. And we didn't have damage in there so that the insurance company did not recognize that when they came out and looked at it. So hence, they're not giving us a penny to do anything for that. So hopefully in the future, next time, whenever we actually have to do that, we hope that we can go back with metal and continue that and then walk away from that building for a long time.
So we've got, what, 12 or 13 years on that building that currently, so we've got some time.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And there is a separation.
Got some time or another hurricane.
In other words, the metal's not running right up to the asphalt shingle, so there's a separation.
It might be a parent or something there.
If not, we'll do the same thing we did at Swansboro High School, which was pretty much, you see how the areas at Swansboro, how they join, there'll be an expansion joint there.
Yeah. Just want to point out that Ed Gordon has joined, joined us, so if you have any questions, he can just chime in whenever he'd like. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, so yesterday, we had, yesterday we had a bid opening. I'll take that back, I think it was, I'll take that back. Tuesday, we had a bid opening for two projects, okay? One was for the Southwest High School roofing project and one was for the interior of Southwest High School. So the Southwest High School roofing project, it consists of two separate, two separate items. What we're looking at is for the hurricane damaged roofing that was above the gym and some of the ancillary hallways area, that was about 611 square yards. That was going to be covered through DPI Insurance. But, as we've talked about before in the capital outlay program and other, in other situations, we do have another 370 square yards on that main, main building for Southwest High School. And you can see the picture in there, one's dark blue for the, dark blue is for hurricane damage and the lighter blue is the roofing system that needs to be replaced. As a matter of fact, during the capital outlay, if you remember, that was identified as the number one project that we needed to get replaced before we moved forward. So what we did was we combined the two projects together into one bid process. And so when you look at, so when you look at the bid sheets, what you're going to see is you have four, you have one base bid and then you have four alternates. So the base bid is to cover, to replace the, the roof that was damaged and caused by Hurricane Florence. That was the area in blue, darker blue that we showed in the floor plan. The alternate one is the cost for filling the skylight in the gym roof to prevent future leaks. So if we're going to replace the, the ceiling there, we were looking at it and we've had problems in the past with the skylight. And so what we want to do is just go ahead and completely enclose it so that way it doesn't leak anymore. And plus with the lighting that we have in the gyms now with the LED lighting that's already been placed in the gyms, there's not going to be a lighting issue for that facility. Then alternate two is for the roof that wasn't damaged by Hurricane Florence but was identified through our capital outlay and through, through Maintenance's assessments of the roofing systems as the number one project needs to be completed. And we also, as I mentioned, we identified in the capital outlay. Alternate three is for the coverboard needed for the roofing system for the base bid, which is the hurricane Florence portion of the project. And alternate four is for the coverboard for the remainder of the project that was, would be covered through capital outlay. One of the things we want to talk about too when we talk about coverboard, we separated it out because one of the things that just happened recently was the building codes for North Carolina changed in 2019. And so our wind ratings for the, for the building is up to 120 mile, I think, 100 and, what is that, Jack Knobber now? 149.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yes, sir.
Winds haven't changed. The time, this is an educational building, they've gone ahead and, as opposed to making an engineer figure out what the safety factors are, up to 150 miles an hour in this case. They've just said, educational building in this location is 150 miles, taking the engineering out. So the winds, we're still looking at the same wind pressures. They just made it easier for architects and make people understand it more harder, I'm not sure.
Right. So it was designed, so the, the new roof was designed for the 150 mile per hour winds, but for warranty purposes, we, by putting additional coverboard on there, we can be warranted for 120 mile per hour winds. Okay? So it's, it's, when it's first built, it's, make sure, I know this is a little confusing. I had to sit down and go through this myself once or twice. But when it's first built, it's designed for 149 mile per hour winds. Okay? Five years from now, okay, will it still maintain that 149 mile per hour wind rating? Maybe, maybe not. But by putting the coverboard in, we're ensuring, we're warranting, it's going to be warranted that it's going to meet at least a minimum of 120 mile per hour wind rating. So it's actually strengthening the, strengthening the roof to the point where we know when the future storms come in, we have a better chance of the roof maintaining its, maintain, I mean, not being damaged in this process and also preserving the property underneath the roof. So like I said, it's a little confusing in this one, but what we were looking at for hurricane, for the hurricane process, I mean, hurricane damaged roof, which would be the base bid, and then we also be looking at the alternate one. That includes the skylights. And then alternate, then alternate three. Okay, that's for the base bid, that's what the insurance company would pay for. And then for what we, the remaining amount that we have identified that needs to be taken care of as well would be in the alternate, alternate two and the base board, which would be alternate four. So the total, so the insurance will cover $931,600 of the project in state or local funds. It'll cover $408,000, I mean, $408,300 worth of the project. The other thing I'd like to mention is when we looked at this, we had three bidders come in on Tuesday. And one of the bidders was, was on, was
Non-responsive.
Was non-responsive because they didn't provide the minor business forms that were required in this process. And so we had to exclude them. The next, the next qualified lowest bidder was Primus. And so at this point in time, we're asking that the board consider awarding Primus the contract for $1,339,600. Of that, as mentioned before, $931,600 will be through DPI Insurance and then local funds will cover the remaining $408,000. One thing to note also is, as discussed earlier, we do have funds available for this and this is identified in our capital outlay program.
Motion to consider staff's recommendation on this bid?
I'll make that motion, ma'am, chair.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
In looking at alternate three and alternate four for the coverboard, AAR of North Carolina, which I understand was not the, the low bid, their, their bids were remarkably higher than the low bidder and the second lowest bidder, or the non-responsive bidder, to the tune of $600,000 plus and $300,000 plus. Do we, do we have any earthly idea why? They had a, they had a 48-hour period of time, I believe, to, to say there was a mathematical error or something like that, that, do they not?
They actually would have had a 72-hour
72-hour.
To withdraw their bid, but at that point, they would not be considered.
Okay.
I'll let Mr. Gordon speak to it if he wants to interject. But I believe that what happened is something that happened a couple of months ago and they actually added their numbers together. And so when they filled out the bid document, they actually put the combination of numbers as a, as a whole number instead of showing an add for the document. They, they took the base bid and added what they would have. In that respect, because they did not show a math equation, if they had shown, here's the base bid and here's the add, and shown a total number, that would have been fine, we could assume that error. However, in this case, we have to assume, you cannot go back to them and clarify that because that would be unfair.
Has the 72 hours passed yet?
They only have 72 hours to withdraw a bid.
To withdraw.
They don't have 72 hours to correct their bid.
Got it.
Correction is not allowed.
Is this a, like you mentioned, this has happened before. Is this something that we need to address in our pre-bid conferences? Or something that we need to address in our solicitations?
It's in all solicitations and it's in spec in several places. And we go over very thoroughly at the pre-bid meetings. If you don't show up at the pre-bid meetings, you don't hear it, what you're looking at is the specifications which clearly state how to do this.
Were they at the pre-bid meeting?
I do not have the answer to that right now. We have the list.
They've not put in a bid protest.
Any other comments or questions?
And the other thing to note, Mr. Williams, is they were notified that we were, we were going with, I mean, that there was a situation there that, so they hadn't put a bid protest in and they had a request for withdrawal.
All right, thank you.
No other comments or questions? All in favor of awarding this bid to Primus? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Finally, we have, the last one is the interior project for Southwest High School. As, as mentioned in the, in the write-ups, this one here is for the gym floor replacement, for the gallery in front of, in front of the gym, the hallways. And we're looking at, not just the gym floor replacement, we're looking at ceilings and floors and additional work that needs to be done in those areas, interior work. This does not include bleachers. I want to make sure I stress that point because a lot of times when we say the gym, they're thinking it's going to be all-inclusive. The bleachers is one of the things that we're looking at right now. I know this is sidebar and I apologize, but this question may come up. But the bleachers, right now DPI Insurance is requesting that we look at repairing the bleachers, existing bleachers that we have, taking them apart, planning them, sanding them, cleaning them up and putting them back together versus purchasing new ones. So what we are doing is we're looking at the cost, the cost it's going to be to repair the bleachers versus the cost for new bleachers. And if it looks like it's a better use of money, we would probably try to go to the new bleachers instead of repairing. But if it's only going to cost us $20,000 for, to repair bleachers versus $180,000 for new bleachers, well then we'd have to go back and look at that. But if it's going to cost us $120,000 to repair old bleachers and you get new ones with extended life for $180,000, then we, we'd go back and bring that, bring that back for it. So this does not include the bleachers. I just wanted to put that caveat in there, just so you were aware of it. Currently, we had, we had two bidders and, and this is a situation where we had a bid opening on July 6th. We tried to have a bid opening on July 2nd, but there were only two bidders, qualified bidders at that point in time and we need three. So we had to defer that and had a second bid opening on July 16th. And same two qualified bidders put their packages in. And at this point in time, Group Three Management was the low bidder for $359,000. So, and we anticipate this project being completed by November 2019. So in this process, I would ask the board to consider a motion to award the construction project for interior repairs for Southwest High School in the amount of $359,000 to Group Three Management.
Do we have a motion to accept this bid?
Motion to approve, second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good job.
Thank you, Dusty, thank you, Daniel, thank you, thank Sherri, thank Ed.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Well, I I know they've got busy schedules and so that's why I was just kind of, nope, we're good.
Well, those maintenance guys probably are glad they're sitting in here in the air conditioning. Next on the agenda is legislative update. And I've spoken with Barry about this, and I think this is something that we as a board need to be aware of. And the first one is on rehiring high-need teachers. I don't know, is CJ going to take that?
CJ's going to do that, but I just want to give a little update on where we are in terms of the big picture. Obviously, we don't have a budget yet, which was the big one, I think that was House, it started in the House, House Bill nine-six-six, which is the budget bill. What we've heard from folks in Raleigh is that, you know, that the governor's, his signing of it has been vetoed. And so for it to move forward, there's two things that can happen. One is they sit down and try to negotiate with the governor or they try to seek an override. And it looks like that the efforts of our representatives right now is to seek override. So that's probably means that this thing is going to drag on for a while. The other thing that's interesting to me right now is the, they've put in a resolution out of the Senate. It's called SJR six-eight-eight, if you want to look it up. But it's a joint resolution for a schedule of how this thing is going to roll out and their timeframe. And what's interesting about it is that they're going to adjourn Monday, this coming Monday, July twenty-second. And they're not scheduled to reconvene until Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. So we know that if nothing happens by Monday, then we're going to be at least a month into this. So what what do we do? Well, the law says that what you do is you revert back to the previous year's budget. And from talking with Mr. Holloman, when you get down in the weeds on that, it's not just you revert back to last year's budget. You revert back to ninety percent of last year's recurring items. So anything that was non-recurring last year, you cannot spend, you can't spend money in those areas. So that's kind of where we're at. We've been here before. We have been as deep into the school year as October, I believe, since I've been doing this. So it's it's nothing new, but it is kind of frustrating. Things like salary increases and new initiatives, you just have to put it on hold until these things start rolling back and we get more evidence of of a budget being passed.
What was the Senate joint resolution number again, please?
It was SJR six-eight-eight. And if you go to the North Carolina School Board Association website, and at the top, I think it says legislative updates. And then you scroll down to alerts, you click on alerts and it'll give you the most recent. The most recent one I could find was July or July twelfth. So that's what I'm basing my comments on. So it's about six pages, but there are eleven bills that are still floating around in committee. Now, these are bills that deal with the school district, not not everything else, but just the ones that deal with school, school systems. There are eleven of those. There are three that are sitting on the governor's desk as of yesterday that would could impact the school district. And five that have been signed into law already. And of those five, I tried to to look at it from the standpoint of what is most important for us and how's it going to impact us. And I, you know, three ninety-nine is probably the one that we need to share with you today. Some of the other ones are going to be minimal impacts to us. And then as we get more information about it, of course, as you know, when a bill is passed and signed into law, there's a ripple effect. And there's this, you know, how does this interpreted? And so each district is will run around and and look at this and say, well, this is how we would interpret it. But then we meet with our our paint groups and our superintendent's groups and then we come back together and decide, okay, well, this is how we're going to try to implement this across the state. Because sometimes you don't get clarification. So I would hate to speak about each and every one of these because we just need time to to go through it and see how we're going. But the three ninety-nine, I believe, is important. So CJ has done most of the research on that, so I'm going to let her speak to that. The other one has nothing to do really with anything in the General Assembly. It has to do with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And a ruling that has been passed, and that's why I had Mr. Greg Grantham here. And I want him to share with us how the school district is going to approach the the issue of home school and athletics. And that has been an ongoing concern over the last, I don't know, ten years probably. And so now we have a ruling on that and how it's going to be applied at the High School Athletic Association level and then how we're going to deal with it. And I think we're at a pretty good spot with that, better than what it could have been. So but I'm going to let Greg talk about that. So CJ, if you will do, Madam Chair, CJ, she can do three ninety-nine.
Okay, Senate Bill three ninety-nine is called an act to allow for retired teachers to return to work in high-need schools without adversely impacting the retired teacher's benefits. So just a little historical context that some of you would have will remember that you you've lived through in your careers working for the state. Back in the good old days or the bad old days, whatever you whatever you want to characterize that, there was a time when you could retire from the state and and go immediately back to work after you retired and collect your retirement benefit and work full-time. And that was a common practice. And it was that that ran afoul of IRS rules and also watchdogs that were were watching out for our retirement system and and maintaining the integrity of that retirement system for for the long term. And so there there came to be some pretty restrictive requirements about how retirees who are collecting a retirement benefit could then return to work. And so we've worked with those for an extended period and there are some options there. And I believe the intent of this bill was to loosen some of those restrictions. And so what this bill says is it provides an option. This option is only available to individuals who are collecting a full retirement. There there's some language in there, if you looked at it, what they're saying is full retirement. This this isn't available to somebody who did some kind of reduced retirement benefit. So if those individuals who have are collecting a full retirement, if they are employed to teach in a high-need school and the definition of high-need school, pretty much for us, is schools that that have been or are Title I. It appears to us that it would include all of our elementary schools and middle schools, none of our high schools. That that teacher can work full-time and continue to collect the retirement benefit. Okay, so the big distinction would be being able to work full-time and continue their their current retire, what they're also collecting from retirement. The catch to it is this, that they could not be paid on the salary schedule where where they would fall based on their years of experience. They can only be paid on the first step of the salary schedule unless they are teaching, hired to teach in a STEM area or EC. And then they could be paid at step six, okay? So that's step one or step six would be significantly less than than where they would have fallen typically with thirty or more years of experience on on the salary schedule. So that's kind of the the catch to it. The school district and individual that we hire like this would then, we would pay their health insurance benefit just like we would if we, when we hire somebody full-time. They would not be using the retiree health insurance, they would be active. And so so we would be responsible for that. The six-month break in service rule still applies. So this would would only, we'd only be able to do this with people who have served their six months of sit-out time. Can't do it with somebody who retired yesterday. As with many things like this, the the devil is in the details. And we have some concerns that need to be addressed before we embrace this and and encourage it widely. So there are some risks. There's there's some risk and there's actually language in there that the whole thing might be undone depending on if they think that there's any concern from the IRS about this. So there's a little risk that if you jump out and do it, that that they're going to ask for an IRS ruling. And if that doesn't go well, they're going to undo it. Well, well, that would be problematic if we had a bunch of people hired like this because school would be underway by the time that we knew that. So.
CJ, do these guidelines apply only to full-time teachers or would it be for, like, if you hired somebody for one class?
Well, that's a really good question. And that's why when I say the devil is in the details, Dr. Collins and I sat and we read it and went through it. And then we we read the interpretations that are been put out by the School Boards Association, NCASA. And I wouldn't have said this my first time through on it, but we have been advised that it is, it is others' interpretation. And they are cautioning us about using this, that that while this opens one option for hiring retirees, that it closes down the options that you have been using that that now will no longer be available to you. So that is our fear.
So like hiring for one class?
Yes, hiring somebody part-time. It is the opinion of some of the organizations that have that have started putting out interpretations of this that this now means in a high-need school where you hire somebody to teach, that you can only use this option.
Is it per school?
It is.
Or is it per district?
It's per school.
Yeah, it's per school, a high-need school. So for instance, at a high school, we hire a retiree part-time under the retirement cap under the the hours that would that would even, we don't even get close to them being full-time. They they teach two periods a day and and we are paying them, you know, fifty percent. And that's allowed because it's fifty percent. So at a high school, we'd still be able to do that. The concern that has been raised is that we may now not be able to do that at a middle school or an elementary school because you can only do this method. So it remains to be seen some of the interpretations. I had a webinar on Monday where the folks doing the webinar from DPI were were saying, look, we're going to have to get back to you on this. And and they understand, and you all, you may hear about this, when you hear just the title to this
Sounds good.
It duh, it sounds good. You have to get into the weeds to say, well, now wait a minute. Maybe this isn't as good as it as it sounded. So we are not, we we are doing it. We we've actually, we have one test case.
Over cautious.
But but we're not going, as my parents would say, whole hog into saying, okay, this is the solution, we're going to hire a bunch of people. So sometimes you do have to try it to find out, so.
Would you explain what you mean by full retirement?
So full retirement and it it's, I think that you have, it's this, it's, it is section one A, one A. That that retired honor before February one, twenty nineteen, that's because the six months still applies, the six-month break in service. And then it has, after attaining the age of at least sixty-five with five years of credible service or the age of at least sixty with twenty-five years of credible service or thirty years of creditable service. That's the the definition they have there, that's the definition of a full retirement.
But it has nothing to do with the retirement options? No, no, no.
No, but there's there's something floating around about that. And I I can speak to that if you want me to speak to that, but that is not this particular bill.
I'm just saying there are other, okay.
Right, right.
Questions?
Even after meeting different criteria, you have to do sixty or whatever. Going back to section E of that, term of the contract, they can only work for one school year.
It's year to year.
It's a
It's a year-to-year contract.
Okay, so annual contract.
We're going to do an interim contract for anybody that we hire under these provisions. And then I would assume
Year-to-year.
That that, you know, we'll see.
Just like anyone else. Well, when I read that
No, when you read it, it
Well, you can only do this one year. I think I think what it means, again, interpretation.
Right.
Yes.
It means year-to-year contract. So you can keep
So the question really is how they're really helping us?
Right, which is remains to be seen. I'm not sure, you know, how many retirees want to work full-time for that level of pay. Um
After what they've earned?
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure that this is really the the boon to us that it has been characterized to be.
Under page three of the law, at the bottom of the page, there's an underlined portion of that with regards to the definition of an employee as a high-need retired teacher. Except no high-need retired teachers defined under that section one fifteen shall be considered an employee. If they're not considered an employee, how do we then pay them all the benefits that we would normally pay an employee?
Right. That it it's a great question. I don't know the backstory of why that underlined piece was was placed in there. The the direction that we have so far, because if you go back to the beginning, it talks about a high-need retired teacher. That's what they're calling people that we may hire under these provisions, not an employee. My only speculation, and it's speculation, is that that has something to do with the IRS rules.
Because under such
I think it does too, I read it.
Our understanding is we hire somebody, they can work full-time. We provide health insurance as we would for a full-time employee. The individual collects retirement, they collect this reduced full-time payment rate. They would not have a retirement deduction, nor would we pay the employer's portion of retirement. So there there are some risks here. There there's also some potential savings for us if we do have people who who wish to do this. And and why might somebody wish to do it? Well, we have somebody already who does. And that that hiring somebody part-time like what we have been doing, that that's not something we've done very much in an elementary school.
Thirty hours.
Yeah. And so that's where we might have people who Yeah, and so that's where we might have people who want to take advantage of this that we they they haven't really been able to um be hired part-time because being a first-grade teacher isn't a part-time job, there's no way to to separate that.
I agree with you CJ, I I think really, and and I, who knows what people were thinking when they wanted to revisit this, but I I'm thinking really we're talking about the high needs like they address here with uh EC. But how about those math, science, physics, some of those really specialized courses where we really need those people because a lot of folks with that background are going out to the private world. So I'm I'm thinking, I just don't see a lot of first-grade teachers coming back and wanting to do that job again at that rate, at that really reduced rate. So I'm I'm thinking originally this must have been designed for those high school courses particularly now.
I think the intent was was good.
The intent was good, but what it turned out to be, very frankly, is an insult to a teacher who's put in thirty or thirty-five years and all of a sudden you wanna hire him back for fifty percent of what they were making. Let's get real, it's an insult.
What what I see here in in what Mr. Williams had covered on that underlying portion is is kind of contingent to the amount of hours that are applied to whether somebody is or is not an employee. But isn't this more or less a social security issue than a IRS issue?
The the um where I I'm sure, you know, for some of these people, there the amount that they can earn under their own social security situation would be at play. But that would be more the individual and the individual's responsibility rather than the employer.
Right, I'm seeing.
Right, so.
That under our under social security administration rules, if you're fully retired, you can still probably get employed full-time. You have no reprofession whatsoever.
With the the reasons that you couldn't to come back to the same employer had to do with IRS rules, had to do with um the state retirement system. You you need, you've gotta have people paying in to the state retirement system, right? And so um you you need to be hiring those people who are contributing members to the retirement system too, we all want that as well.
But even at that level, anyone um becoming an employee of any place and time after retirement contributes to the system.
I I'd like to go back uh to the portion about the health insurance. Where in the law does it say that we would do that? Or is that a decision that we've interpreted that we would do that as a district?
That's a great question, Mr. Williams. It actually is, that was one of the questions I had initially because one of the reasons that you can't hire your own retirees back to work full-time is because of the Affordable Care Act rules. You you run uh uh you run up against that. That's why we've been very careful about how we do hire retirees so that we don't uh risk anybody's health insurance retire uh with the retirement system. And so if if you look, we've asked this question, I did ask this question in the webinar and and they confirmed that it's not just our interpretation. Um but on page four, section four, one A, if you go to the very end of it, they actually did specify the employing unit shall pay the employer premiums for retirees who enroll under this subdivision. And I believe that is where they are talking about the health insurance, which then if we are enrolling them in in health insurance and and paying those premiums as we would for any other full-time employee, that then um puts us right with the Affordable Care Act for this. Um that that's what would make that allowable.
If they're eligible under their current retirement program, why would the legislature then write law that would give them the ability to tax, in effect taxes? It's basically the school districts are having to pick up the cost of additional healthcare that they already have.
Right, but the state doesn't have to pay for it.
Right, the state.
That that is a really good point, you're correct. And, you know, these people would qualify under the retirement plan and then we would be paying for it. However, we would be paying for it if we hired anybody else for this job too, right? So it's not an additional cost for us, we would have been paying that for any first-grade full-time teacher that we paid, so it's and it's the same, it's the same rate that. So it's not, it's a cost to us, but it's not in addition to what we would have paid to hire somebody. Where we would save if, and this, I I don't see this in the um law myself, but we've been told by those who are um interpreting and and putting out interpretations for us, where we would save is the retirement um contribution that we would be paying for anybody else that we hired that we would not be paying for for these. So there's where the offset, I think, um Mr. Collins is not here, but I think that's like about an eighteen percent uh deal there, so that's sort of a significant savings, yeah.
Thank you CJ, and the rest of the story she'll bring back again.
See how it goes.
Greg, are you going to do this? These are the guidelines, administrative guidelines for high school.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Dr. Collins and members of the board, um as Dr. Collins mentioned, for about, I don't know, eight or ten years now, there has been a lobbying group in the General Assembly that has been pushing hard for home-school students to be allowed to participate in high school athletics in the state of North Carolina. Been a couple of different times bills have been introduced, but they failed to pass. And uh the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, their board of directors felt if they didn't adopt a policy uh that would fit what was best for high schools and high school athletics, a policy may be rammed down their throat by legislators that may not understand the ramifications of how that would impact high school athletics. So at their May board meeting, uh the High School Athletic Association did adopt a policy uh that beginning with this upcoming nineteen-twenty school year will allow home-school students to participate in high school athletics at NCHS A member schools with some caveats. First one being that the the student cannot be just a home-school student. They must enroll uh at the school in which they're domiciled that falls in in line with the rules the High School Athletic Association has for any other student, that you have to compete at the school where you live in that that school's attendance zone. So the student would have to enroll in a minimum of half the school day. So in Onze County Schools, all of our high schools are on a four-period day. So a student would have to be enrolled in at least two classes with Onze County Schools um at the school where they're domiciled. And I I want to keep using that to to clarify that uh we do have policies in Onze County Schools, controlled enrollment and whatnot, where a student that lives in, let's say, the Swansboro District could apply for controlled enrollment and attend school at at Dixon or Jacksonville or Richlands. Under the home-school policy, the student will only be eligible to participate in athletics at the school that they are domiciled in that attendance zone. So a home-school student that lives in the Swansboro District could not then apply for controlled enrollment and say, I know I live in Swansboro, but I wanna take my two classes at Richlands and play sports at Richlands. Now, they they would only be allowed to participate at the school that they actually live in that attendance zone. And they must enroll in at least two classes at the school. And they must pass all of the classes that they take through the public school system. So a a normal student under NCHS A rules uh at one of our high schools, if they're enrolled in three classes, to be eligible, they must pass at least three of those four classes during the previous semester to be eligible. The home-school student is gonna have to pass both the two classes that they take through Onze County Schools to be eligible in in the subsequent semester. So they can't just pass one of the classes they take with us and then mama vouches that they tap pass nine classes with her at home. Uh they're gonna have to pass both the two classes they take with us and the home-school parent must certify that they've passed the requisite number of courses that they're taking.
Greg, I noticed in here that there's no mention of what kind of classes.
That was my question too.
There there it's.
So they could take basket weaving one oh one.
We have to offer.
And.
They could take weightlifting.
We have to offer.
And they could take some other fitness class.
As long as it's a class that we're offering.
Those courses could also be online courses, is that my idea?
According to according to the state policy, uh initially it said at least one of the two classes had to be taken face-to-face. But as we pointed out in some of our districts, we have virtual academies and virtual classes and it would, we would then be requiring home-school students to do something we don't even require our regularly enrolled students to do. So they they did leave a caveat where either one of the classes has to be face-to-face or meet local LEA requirements. So in our LEA policy, we're simply requiring them to be enrolled and take two classes with Onze County Schools. In theory, they could be through the virtual academy.
We then get to count students who are enrolled in at least two classes as a regular enrollee for monetary purposes with the state.
It's my understanding, as long as they're enrolled in at least two classes.
Have to instructional day.
We receive the full ADM allotment for that student.
That is correct. Couple of the caveats, um the student must have been enrolled in a home-school for the previous three hundred and sixty-five days and the home-school that they're enrolled at must be registered with the uh North Carolina Department of Non-Traditional Schools. So, you know, Ron Taylor can't pull his child out of Onze County Schools in May and say, I'm homeschooling them for the rest of the year and then show up in August and say, I want him to participate in athletics as a home-school student. They must have been home-schooled for the previous three hundred and sixty-five days. And then once they do this and and they become dual-enrolled because they are dual-enrolled as a home-school student and as one of ours, they must maintain that dual enrollment in order to maintain their athletic eligibility. In other words, you couldn't play sports in the fall and in second semester say, I'm I'm just gonna homeschool them again and then show back up next fall.
That was our question earlier.
Again, they have to maintain that dual enrollment throughout. At the point that they unenroll from our school system, they would have to sit out three hundred and sixty-five days before they could apply again. Student must present uh a request within ten days of the start of each sport season that they plan to do this, that they plan to participate in athletics. We have created an online form uh that on our Onze County Schools website right now, as well as each of the seven high school athletic sites on their webpages, there are the guidelines that explain what a student would have to do if they wanted to participate, as well as the form that they would have to submit uh within that ten-day out window announcing that my child intends to enroll at whichever school and would like to participate in athletics.
Do we have any idea how many students this might potentially impact us?
What what is your estimate of?
It's only at high schools, is that?
It is only high schools, uh NCDPI controls uh middle-school sports and their policy has not changed that in order to participate in middle-school athletics, you must be a a regularly enrolled, full-time student at the middle school that you want to participate in. So this is only a high school situation. Honestly, I don't have any idea, I mean, we know about how many home-school students there are in Onze County, how many of those are high school age, don't know. Uh how many parents that are truly homeschooling their students once they find out that I'm gonna have to enroll my child for two periods a day? Is that gonna make it a lot less attractive? I if I had to guess, I would say a handful at most.
That would be my assessment as well. I don't think that you're gonna have a whole lot of homeschoolers that are going to want to dual-enroll just to get to get to play sports.
And and again, uh we do have some athletic teams on on each of our campuses that are basically no-cut teams. I mean, they'll take, you know, cross-country track. A lot of our football programs will take any kids that come out. But we do have sports that that only a certain number, you know, you're only gonna allow a certain number to participate. So the child announcing that they want to participate in athletics, they still have to make the team. There's no guarantee that once they've enrolled that that they're gonna be good enough to actually make a team that they're trying out for.
And even if they do make the team, they still have to be a member.
Have to maintain the membership.
Have to follow the guidelines for that coach and that school and athletic department. And while home-schools students have their own roles and guidelines. So I think the argument the past eight or ten years is how did town make all that work? Are you discriminating against my child for not starting them at quarterback because he's home-schooled? So um those are the challenges.
So if they don't make the team, are they then disenrolled?
That's entirely up to the parent and the child. I mean, if that was their only reason for enrolling, you would assume they probably would, but there's no requirement.
We don't guarantee any other child makes the team, they're on their skill and their.
But like it could be. Once they're enrolled though, we get credit for them even if they drop out.
Absolutely, as we do any other student. But again, it it could be um the the child wants to try out for a fall sport and and hypothetically don't make that one. Maybe they want to try out for a winter sport as well, maybe they wanna play a spring sport as well. So there's no guarantee that just 'cause they didn't make that first team, as is the case with any of our regularly enrolled students.
The the harder part of my question, I guess, is that if they do fail and they're dual-enrolled, are they locked in for the three hundred and sixty-five?
They failed to make the team or they failed a course.
If they if they failed to make the team, which is a.
Well, that's up to them.
That's up to them, that's their choice.
Yeah, that's it would be their choice at at any point, as it is with any regularly enrolled student. You can withdraw from Onze County Schools at any time you choose to.
But they would have to wait three hundred and sixty-five days before.
If they wanted to come back.
If they wanna come back for athletics.
For athletic purposes, yes, sir.
And all the other High School Athletic Association rules, eight semesters, all that, felony provision, all that applies?
Absolutely. So again, you bring up a good point, Mr. Hudson, all those rules apply. So if 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 I'm homeschooling my child at home and he's nineteen years old, but I've decided for the first time ever, I think he should play football, he's already passed the age requirement that the NCHS A has established. Or I'm homeschooling my child at home and he's a little slow, so, you know, this is his eighth year of me teaching him high school courses, he's already passed the eight semester window, so he wouldn't be eligible. So they do have to meet all the other guidelines and requirements for uh any other student would have to meet.
You want to share uh the executive director of the Athletic Association, her presentation? No, you.
Well, we were very fortunate, I mean, we went to the conference at Carolina Beach. Q Tucker came and spoke with us uh and just did a great job, her personality, her leadership. She talked with us about this, so we knew that it was coming down the line, but she said either we're gonna have to do it or the legislature's gonna step in to do it. So I think we've made the right decision. It, as with all, there are other things that have to be considered and understand this. And this has always been a concern for me. Suppose we're footballing and Ken and I are on the bus together and he's home-schooled and I'm not. And they have an altercation and it results in a suspension. How do we handle that? I guess now because they're enrolled in two courses, we can we can do that.
Well, they're our student, that's the classification.
Now they are, now, here-tofore they have not been.
They have not been.
This sort of handles that situation.
That's right.
Thank goodness.
I know, any other?
So so really, we were talking about this a little bit before the meeting. So this is gonna become our guideline, not a policy.
Right.
Is that correct?
It's a guideline.
A guideline, how how we handle uh homes. A guideline, how, how we handle home school kids who now will become duly enrolled and therefore be able to participate.
One other thing that she said too, Ms. Tucker, if you're concerned about issues like this, you need to know who you're sending to route because many of those folks have the kind of kids that we're talking to.
You're right.
Now, if we're, what's the difference between us making this a guideline and a policy? Why wouldn't we make it a policy of the school district as long as it's?
Well, I thought it was, was a policy, but it's administrative guideline from the North Carolina Athletic Association, so we don't really have a choice if we're going to, because we go by their guidelines.
We're gonna participate.
But you.
We're, we're not a member.
We aren't.
This group right here is not a member of the North Carolina Athletic Association.
No, but enrollment process is part of policy. So if we don't make it a part of policy, how are we then going to enforce it?
So we can have a, a mirroring Onslow County Schools' policy, a policy that mirrors the guidelines of ASA.
We can add it to our attendance policy.
You could, I mean, there's places in there that you could put it. I would caution not to do that because of the changing of this. It evolves pretty rapidly and I don't know that, um, the fact that the, the membership to the High School Athletic Association is not the school boards, it's the individual school, correct?
Correct.
So each individual school is a member of the, of this, not the school district. So I don't know that.
Understand. Going back to the issue that I have, it is an enrollment issue that we will have and it is outside of what we currently have, so we don't have any guidelines. If we have an issue or a deviance between one high school and another, how do we then solve that? We're setting ourselves up potentially for an issue between two schools that aren't handling the, the policies or the, the administrative process guidelines that we're talking about, so.
I don't, I, I understand what you're saying and I did bring that question up before we had the meeting today. But I don't think there will, and I, I'm not, I think schools are gonna be governed by us and what happens in that school. And I don't know if we want to make a policy and do it now, do we want to let it run its course and see what happens? Alec, what is your opinion, Jason?
My thoughts are that if, if the High School Athletic Association has called us a guideline for their use and the way they go about changing their guidelines are probably more informal than a policy or a directive or a regulation. And for that reason, if, if we have a policy that adopts this current guideline from the High Schools Association, every time they tweak or change or modify their guideline, which they may can do easily, then we would, we would have to go back and address our policy. That, that's the first.
But we do that anyway, anytime the legislature makes rules and regulations.
We do with the General Assembly and acts the law. We absolutely do.
Is it possible to simply cite it in our policy?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we could cite it. We do that already with the eight, the eight semester.
You should be tempted.
It is in our policy now. That, I mean, like participation in athletics, isn't it?
They're directives and guidelines.
I think there's, there may, Alec could speak to it, and I think maybe something in our policy right now about high school athletics, following their, following the NCHSA.
Why don't we just ask staff to look into that?
I think that'd be great.
But I do, I know that, I think it's cited in there already, like in the handbook or something.
As guidelines and directives, not as policy.
Well, we do have a, a policy that addresses enrollment.
Yeah, I understand that.
Would that be a good place to put it?
Student.
Yeah. I, I think it's good to have staff come back with that. I think, to me, it even seems that, that a motion that our high schools will follow High School Athletic Association guidelines and, and policies.
Well, they have to.
They have to. They must stay a member.
Right. So maybe it's already covered.
Good for the parent who may challenge, well, here it is.
Yes.
For correct different interpretations between schools.
Yeah, right, that way we're covered.
If our staff could look at it and bring it back.
Well, I'm sure that Greg isn't gonna let them interpret it, but his way. His way or the highway.
I'm gonna follow the administrative guidelines and the NCHSA handle. That's right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The Athletic Association guidelines are listed in the back of the high school registration handbook, so I knew that had been a part of that. No, it's still there today.
Yeah, I knew it was in the handbook.
It's in the registration guide for high schools.
But it probably needs to be in our.
Age, students, academics, all of that information is included.
It probably needs to be in our policy that addresses transfer students, enrollment of students, those categories that are there.
But all the high schools have it.
And updated based on this being effective this coming school year, right?
We look forward to receiving staff's recommendation and how you want to address that. Any other thing?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Y'all have a great day and hope that.